Welcome to, to address us with any concerns or ideas or suggestions that you may have. Our first order of business on the agenda this evening is the public hearing for the application for the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for a small cities development block grant. And I believe you will be handling that.
Good evening, everybody. The city of Tifton is considering applying to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for a small city's community development block grant of the $50,000. These funds must be used to benefit lower income persons. The activities for which these funds may be used will be housing, public facilities, and economic development. The purpose this year tonight is to get public input as far as developments that you think would be appropriate, any low-income housing, or any other project that may fit into the grant list. Is there anyone here that would like to talk about possible uses of grants? If I see no public input, I ask that public hearing be closed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Womack. And the public hearing is now closed, and we will call our council meeting to order. And our first order of business is our prayer and our pledge, and Vice Mayor Eglers is going to offer our prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Will you pray with me? Dear Lord, thank you for so many blessings that you bestowed upon us each and every day, Lord. We ask that you watch over us as you guide us to do your work, Lord. Lord, we ask that you be with our men and women fighting overseas for our freedom, because we know without these brave men and women, we could not practice our freedoms today. Lord, we ask that you be with the needy, the ill, the weak, Lord, as we know that you are the ultimate provider and the ultimate healer. Lord, we also ask that you be with the leaders of our country, the leaders of our state, and the leaders of our city, Lord, so that we may do your work. And all these things I ask in your holy name, amen.
Let's stand at this flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Today I had the opportunity to go to the Tifton Experience Club, and one of Tifton's finest was recognized and honored as the Officer of the Year. And I would like for Buddy Doughty and Lieutenant Garfield Rainey to stand up and tell us a little bit about your presentation, if you wouldn't mind. We would like to recognize you as well, the work that you've done, and our police department does is phenomenal, going off the agenda just a smidge, so bear with us here.
Well, I told Garfield that you had a question, I did the same speech I did today. You gotta be a... Frankly, not meant to get out there.
Okay, that's fine.
Garfield ran with us since 1988. He left the Honorable Employee of Argus and come to work with us. And he's been with us ever since. He is a very well-respected, well-respected member of our community. He also won my Tifton Mayor's training for a long time. And I said that he was not a high-end, low-income person. Thank you. Right there. Anybody ever seen stuff like this tonight? I think the Experience Club is, it was a real big surprise to me. I wasn't expecting this. I was just told to be there at 11:45, I'll ask some questions. You have to understand, you never tell if he's for real or if he's playing.
You're right.
We were doing it. All right. I like that, everybody, and thank you again.
Thank you. We are so fortunate to have outstanding public safety officers in this community. Our police department, our fire department, these guys and ladies, they do such a fine job, and I'm so proud of them. I know the entire council is proud, so congratulations, Garfield.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Well, he might have worked it.
Our next order of business is something I'm particularly proud to do. I'm gonna ask my friend, Mr. William Bowen, to come forward. William has served in the past on the Tifton-Tipton County Tourism Association and has agreed to serve again. And so, William, we're gonna swear you in this evening, and then we're gonna swear at you for the rest of the year. Anyway, congratulations and thank you for volunteering to do this. It's what this community is all about. We have so many boards and commissions and authorities that are handled and really run by the citizenry of this community, and so it takes a partnership. It takes us all working together, so thank you very much for your willingness. So, at this time, all you have to do, I believe, is to answer, I do, I don't know if I read this, but if you will raise your right hand, and this is your affirmation. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton-Tipton County Tourism Association, and that I will support and defend the Charter of the City of Tifton as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed unless providentially hindered. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure applicable thereto. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the State of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton. Do you affirm?
I do, sir.
Congratulations, thank you. Good things, William, so, so thank you again. Also, at this time, it's also a privilege to be able to honor citizens of this community who go above and beyond the call of duty. Sometimes things happen that place people in a particular spotlight, and they don't do it for the spotlight, but we want to acknowledge and to recognize the good deeds of our citizens. This is the friendly city. And so, at this point in time, I would like to recognize for outstanding service Jasmine Rayless, Erin Gray, and Brittany Couch. If you folks are, would mind joining us up here in the front? It's my understanding, as employees at McDonald's, that a patron, I think, had left a pocketbook and had medication and personal belongings and things like that, and so these folks were so kind and considerate, they shipped the pocketbook back. We got a very nice email from the owner of that pocketbook that just bragged and bragged on how wonderful y'all were, that they didn't expect it to even be there, much less to be sent back in the manner that it was. So, I'd like to read this proclamation, and I have one for each of you, and we'd like to say thank you. Whereas it has been brought to our attention that these ladies have gone above and beyond the call of duty, and whereas their provision of care and concern to a visitor to our city is a shining example of the great leadership while providing excellent customer service, and whereas it is important that people who do good deeds be commended for their actions. Whereas Tifton is proud to have such citizens as these three ladies who express the truest distinction of the friendly city, and whereas the City of Tifton is proud to have citizens of this caliber living in our community, providing such quality and excellence in services expressed by them to their customers. Now therefore, I Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of the Tifton City Council, do hereby recognize Jasmine Rayless, Erin Gray, and Brittany Couch for their excellence in service and truly good deeds to Mr. Mr. Whaler of Newport, Kentucky, given under my hand and seal with the City of Tifton this first day of February 2016. So ladies, thank you so much. Would y'all like to say anything? The floor is yours.
I would like to say that, and I'm a teenager, and I try all the time to show respect and we practice that each day, throughout, make sure you're speaking to the customer, when you're speaking with the... So it's our job to make sure you guys are happy. I always remember this, and I'm not gonna put it on my face, but you guys have to always... Thank you, and your money.
Thank you so much, being great citizens. We really appreciate that. You made an impactful testimony, and I think that was wonderful. Thank you. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we will have an approval of our council agenda. Would anybody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So we have a motion second. Is there any discussion, any need to change? All those in favor, please signify by saying, now, let me... Jack has asked that we don't have to raise our hands anymore, so I say we don't have to raise our hands anymore. So please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, thank you. All right, did we have any citizen input, Ryan?
No, we did not.
Okay, all right, we'll move beyond that. Now we have an approval of the minutes of the January 4th, written in our council meeting. Take a motion for that.
So moved.
We have a motion, is it second? We have a motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Next, we have our consent agenda, and I do want to be, to let everyone know that at our consent agenda, we do discuss these items at our workshop. So sometimes it appears we just look at an item on the agenda that we have presented for us tonight with no discussion. That discussion actually takes place on the third Thursday of each month. So we have discussed all of the items that are on the consent agenda, and we have the opportunity to approve them individually, or discuss them individually, or take them collectively. So it's at your will, council, whatever you would like to do. Would you like to accept them collectively, or is there anything we need to discuss?
Maybe we just gotta, we vote as a group.
Okay, so take all, all, one, two, three, four, five items for the consent agenda? You wanna make that motion? Yes, we have a motion to approve all five items of the consent agenda. Second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No opposed, excellent. All right, item number seven on our agenda is a resolution authorizing the negotiation of a contract with Ecological Planning Group, providing for its consultant services for the Tifton Fire Department. At this point in time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Scott Murphy to come forward and share some information with us on that.
Mayor and council, you may remember, at our retreat just two weekends ago, we discussed the potential of utilizing an outside firm to look at ways to structure the fire department, both funding-wise and just from a day-to-day operations standpoint. We contacted a number of different firms and looked at some of the options for us that are out there. Ecological Planning Group is actually a firm based out of Savannah. Courtney Reich is the one that spoke with us a few weekends ago. It's somewhat specialized. Her firm has provided us a contract knock to its seat price of about $65,000. This would allow us to spend some time over the next several months developing our long-term plan for fire department and water departments as we move to try to improve our ISO rating. We've obviously had the, the script coming forward with the fire, but our near-term and long-term goals are to provide just a better fire rating for the community. This is a great opportunity to do that. This resolution would simply allow us to enter into negotiations, allow the city manager to enter into negotiations with the firm, and we do not anticipate the price being near that. Execute it as well, I'm sorry. And execute, thank you, Mr. Womack. And execute that as well.
Mayor, I might, and council, I might add, I've talked with Scott. Basically, this is going over our sole sourcing portion of our purchasing policies. Scott's done some investigation. We've looked around, and there's nobody else that does this same type of work. And so that's why we're looking for a sole sourcing and approving this resolution.
Does anyone have any questions, Scott, or Rob? At this point in time, we will take a motion to either approve or not approve the resolution.
I approve, or I make a motion that we approve line item seven. Second.
We have a motion as second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
Still used to going, yes.
You did the second, correct?
I did.
Yes. All right. Item number eight, under other businesses, consider authorization for the city manager to execute the gift letter to Affordable Equity Partners for Development of Tiff Town Manor for Senior Housing. We did discuss that at the workshop.
Andy Young is available up here. She does need to let you all know of something.
Mandy, would you mind approaching, please?
I'll be brief, which is hard for me, as you know. I just wanted to, you know, I came to you all last year, the year before, the residents at West Haven, it scored high enough to be funded, but for some reason, DCA did not select the project from last year, but we appealed it, and we actually got word just a few minutes ago, I will, I'll tell you quote, from DCA, Robert Fink indicated they recommended the board approve our deal. We should be very confident that we'll be moving forward with the application from last year. So, that was good news to hear. I didn't want to come and confuse everyone, but we were gonna resubmit that application if it was not, for some reason, if it didn't win the appeal. So we're looking to move forward with a senior development. You all had the information, I think, I sent over. It's property right adjacent to where we currently have it. So if you have any questions, I'll entertain those. We're still looking at 48 to 55 to 56 units, so it'd be a senior development, and Tiff's Town Manor is the name we've selected for that.
That's wonderful. Does anyone have any questions?
I have a question, Mayor. Andy, I mean, if you've appealed this, are they going under our letter that you got last year?
Yes, that's from last year, yes. I was just, I was letting them all know that if it was not, if for some reason we didn't win the appeal, we would resubmit the application from last year. So everything is current as to what Jessica presented last week.
So we don't need a new letter?
No, I just wanted you all to be aware, there was a little...
Yeah, okay.
It would have been resubmitted under the new letter.
But it's, it's the new information that you all have, yeah. Like I said, I just, we just received word, literally, probably 30 minutes ago, so...
That's good.
Yeah, it's great, it's great.
I thought Rob was gonna ask for an apartment, I just didn't...
No, no. I'm getting close.
Unfortunately, you can't reserve.
You know, it's a house, it can seem to be a bit...
Thanks, Rob. Now, you know, we have a certain amount of these letters we can give out, right? Is that one a year? So, okay, all right. Due to the recent information that we received, I would recommend to oppose, make a motion to oppose.
Why don't we just strike item seven? Would that, I mean, excuse me, item eight, would that be a better...
Well, they're still requesting the letter.
Are you still, do you need the...
For their new project.
For the new...
Oh, the new project. I thought this was the same project we were approving the letter for.
No, it...
I'm sorry, I guess I'm confused.
Like I said, I was worried it would confuse you all.
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, I wanted to come early enough, because you never know if other developers were to come in and ask for a letter. So this is for the new project that I, you've received information on, so it's Tiff's Town Manor. But like I said, I wanted to debrief you all that it possibly could have been last year's application, but with this word from DCA today, that makes us feel very at ease, which we, we were told that we were for certain probably going to be funded, but you never know.
So, okay. So you do, do in fact need the letter?
We do.
Okay, well, then, what, since I made the motion, do I need to amend my motion? How does that work, Rob?
Well, I never got a second, so I think...
You never quite finished, so you...
Okay, okay, good. Well, then I would like to make a motion to approve line item eight.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further confusing discussion, or are we...
Sorry.
No, you're fine, I'm just picking at them. All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, excellent. Okay, thank you, thank you. Item number nine is consider the appeal of the Historic Preservation Commission decision on case H-15-000-036 for property located at 379 South Main Street Railway Bank owned by Jay Mullinax. We did hear about this at the workshop. Does anyone have any discussion or any questions before we...
Yeah, I'd like to say that the HPC did follow the guidelines in this, but it shows to me that there's a gap in our guidelines, that it looks at the size of the building with signs, not the size of the letters on the signs. And I'm thinking that we should look at that.
In addition, the way I read the guidelines, and I'll give my legal opinion, it talks about individual letters, two feet individual letters, okay? Well, this is a complete sign. What he has up there right now are individual letters. This sign, to me, isn't individual letters, and so this two-feet business wouldn't, I don't think would apply.
It wasn't even two feet, I believe it was two inches, wasn't it?
Two inches, well...
It was very small.
No, it's two feet.
No, it's two feet.
Two feet individual letters.
Gotcha, yeah.
But it's a sign that doesn't have individual letters to it, so I think we should...
I would suggest we look at the, the Historic Preservation Guidelines, though, to look at the size of the individual letters and signs in relation to the size of the buildings.
Let me ask this of our city attorney. I know that we have had some discussion about some changes that have happened with regard to signage, and maybe reviewing that. Would this be the opportunity to maybe address, kinda go back and revisit that, or...
We did revisit it a couple of years ago, and we did make some amendments at that time. I think, you know, what Frank is saying is, from my reading of it, it does need to be addressed, because it appears that the total signed area is, you know, you look at the size of the facade, whereas you're not looking at the size of the letters with the overall size of the sign. So I think that that, there should be some calculation that you could make about the letter size in conjunction with the size of the sign. Now, you know, I've, I read, you know, as I read, it was, you know, the maximum height of individual letters should be two feet. That's what my understanding was, and I believe the application was, was to exceed that. And so basically, on this appeal, you know, what you have to decide is whether or not the Historic Preservation Commission abused their discretion in not approving a sign that exceeded two feet.
Yeah, I don't feel they abused their discretion, I think they followed the guidelines. It just, it shows me that the guidelines need revising.
I would, I still maintain this individual letter, the word individual, that he has individual letters in there today. He's not putting up more individual letters, he's putting up a complete sign, and so...
Which did meet the guidelines, I think, of course, but the overall sign did.
The overall sign was okay, but they started measuring the letters within the sign and not individual, I mean, I...
I don't think there's any question that there was...
I think that's up to interpretation, right? Sounds like it'd be up to interpretation.
Yeah. I don't think there's any insinuation that there was any abuse of power. That's, that's not, you know, that, that is not the indication, I don't think, of the council. The overall sign was approved, is that correct?
Yes, I think it was the size of the letters.
Yeah. So how can we, how can we support the decision of the HPC, what I think is important to all of us? Because the overall sign was absolutely approved and, and no issue, but allow Mr. Mullinax to have the particular logo, which is part of multiple stores, that logo on that sign?
The, in my opinion, the better practice would be if you determine that the HPC guidelines really don't address the size of the letters appropriately based upon the size of the sign, then that should be amended with the formula that would be appropriate to have a letter, you know, letter size commensurate with the sign size. And certainly, you know, that can be done probably in short order. I imagine there's plenty of information out there that we could draft an amendment to the HPC guidelines to provide for larger letters for larger signs. As Frank was saying, basically, when you're talking about an abuse of discretion, it's generally when you're saying that the tribunal below basically didn't have a reasonable basis for which to make their decision. And I, I can tell you what, what an abuse of discretion is, if you'd like to hear that. Because I thought it may come up, but this is what, this is from what they call corpus jurisprudence. It says discretion is abused where the court has exceeded the bounds of reason in view of all the circumstances, where a decision lacks a reasonable basis, where the decision is against logic and the facts and reasonable deductions to be drawn therefrom, or where the court exercises discretion on grounds or for reasons clearly untenable, or to an extent clearly unreasonable. Of course, when we're talking about the court, that's generally when we have a trial in front of a judge, we'll take it with the Court of Appeals. The appellate courts look for an abuse of discretion, and generally, it's a high standard. And the Court of Appeals or the appellate courts will not reverse a trial court unless there was, they cannot attach a reason to what the trial court did below. And so that's basically what you're looking at when you're looking as an appellate body from a decision of what, of the HPC, is was there an abuse of discretion?
I just hate that word abuse, that sounds, I don't, you know, that's just me personally. I hate the way that's said.
Legal terms, yeah, before misinterpretation.
Yeah, I should, yes, I know that's semantics, but...
So that's, that's basically what, what the law is, and certainly, you've heard what an abuse of discretion is, what the meaning is, and...
I mean, ultimately, you know, we want things to look nice.
Absolutely.
So if you look at the pictures of the signs, you follow, take the interpretation of the letters had to be smaller, then that sign, based on the entire front of that building, is gonna look dumb. I mean, it's just not, you know, and Jay doesn't know that. And so I think everybody agrees, the sign's gonna look a whole lot better than what he's got today, and still, to me, meets the guidelines based on the way I interpret. So how do we...
If we, um, could get this on the, on the workshop agenda for this month, could we possibly have it on the council agenda for the next meeting in March?
Could we have a special call meeting after?
Well, there's two ways, and generally, if we're going to revise it, we'd like to bring, you know, if we're gonna adopt an amendment, which would be an ordinance, we just like, like to workshop that, and then at the subsequent meeting, we'd like to have two readings, basically, of the ordinance, workshop it, and then adopt it. But to answer your question, Frank, yes, I mean, you could have something, you could workshop it this month, and you could adopt it the first meeting in March.
Because I don't want to delay railway freight, putting up your sign as much as possible, but I do believe that this points out a problem in the guidelines that need to be addressed.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I understand if we could have a called meeting afterwards to approve...
Just for this?
Since we're all in favor, it seems like we're, it seems like we're all in favor of making this change, I'm just, based off what I'm, I'm staying here and listening to, go ahead and just making that a part of the agenda, having the documentation and the language in place, and go and move forward with it. And that would hold off, what, two weeks, two weeks of delay for him to be able to put his sign up.
Our question of practice has been that we don't, you know, have a first read of an ordinance and then adopt it the second meeting, basically, that's what you would be doing, I mean, Ron isn't that...
Well, let me ask you this, so I just kinda kept on for, kept the chase. Like I said, I think we are all in support of the sign that, that has been submitted, and we don't want to infer in any way that we don't trust or don't appreciate the judgment of HPC. They followed the guidelines that they have. Do we have the ability to approve that sign tonight regardless of what the termination, I mean, the, the, um, the explanation is, and then come back and fix this so that HPC can then operate within the guidelines that they need to?
Well, the answer basically is that this is an appeal, and the city council has the authority to modify the decision of the HPC...
Okay.
If it finds that the HPC abuses discretion. So you have the authority to do it if you find that they abused their discretion, and that's basically what the, the ordinance provides for an appeal and what the standard of review is.
So that, that... I'm just gonna go ahead and, and, I'm, I believe, I'm gonna make a motion to consider the appeal for HPC case H-15-000-036 for property located at 379 South Main Street, Railway, Railway Freight.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Then we have a second.
Let's go, wait.
Motion to approve the, um, sign.
To approve the sign?
Yes.
Okay. As submitted, which is to grant this appeal.
To grant the appeal, that's great.
Okay, so we have a motion, Wes, we have a second, Johnnie. Is there any further discussion?
I would suggest that we put on the workshop agenda to look at the size of letters on these signs for the future, so we can...
Why don't we do this? Let's go ahead and, and vote on this motion that's on the floor, and then as soon as this motion is voted upon, if you could make that motion, and then we can address that, is that appropriate?
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of approving the appeal, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed and four in favor.
Mayor, I would just like to make the comment that abusive power, I think is a strong word. I do want to, I'm considering that in interpretation. And based on what Jack said, I feel the same way on that.
It's abuse of discretion.
Abuse of discretion.
I do move that, for the workshop agenda coming up, that we do look at the size of letters on signs in relationship to the size of the buildings.
Perfect. Was there any, we had several things we might want to explore. Do you want to just look at that whole sign issue?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so let's just look at the signs in general, okay? All right, so we have a motion to that, to discuss signs in general. Is there a second to have that for the workshop?
Uh, Mayor, just for clarification, signs in general in the historic district?
In the historic district, yes. Anything that would fall up under those guidelines? Okay, so we have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed.
Who seconded that, please?
Jack.
And again, I want to reiterate, it's not a issue with Historic Preservation Commission. It is absolutely not that. We just need a little clarification within the guidelines, so we can make sure that we're all on the same page. All right, item number ten is approval of board appointments. In, in your package, you had a board report. Ryan, do you want to address that?
Yes, excuse me. Yes, um, at the council workshop, I reviewed, um, the twenty sixteen anticipated vacancies and reappointments. And I brought to your attention that I had an application for Deana Willis. I did speak with, Dr. Homer Day came by the other day to let me know that Sherry Wright, who was appointed last year, has in fact resigned due to family issues. So that was the reason that they had asked Ms. Deana to consider serving and to submit the application.
Okay.
And also, at that meeting, we talked about vacancy on the Keep Tiff Beautiful Board and the fact that we have an application from Sandra Newman. So staff is recommending or offering to you those two votes to be appointed.
Okay.
And if I need to take it in separate motions, that's fine as well.
Okay. Why don't we do that? Why don't we take the housing authority first? So we'll take a motion to appoint Ms. Deana Willis to the housing authority?
So moved.
So moved, we have a motion in second.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, thank you. And then for Keep Tiff Beautiful, I'll take a motion for appointing Ms. Sandra Newman as the city representative to Keep Tiff Beautiful.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion in second.
Second.
We have a motion in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item is approval of the appointment to the Downtown Development Authority. Do we have?
There's no information in there.
I don't think so.
That was your recommendation?
That was for, um, Ex officio, one, four...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, so that was for Mr. Sales.
That's your point, Frank Sales, so I was thinking, I was thinking another board member, I am so sorry. The Downtown Development Authority does have a council representative that sits as a board member of that authority. In the past, it has been the mayor, and I would like to see us appoint Frank Sales as that position, representing the city and the city council on the Downtown Development Authority, but it will take a vote to do so. So if anyone would like to make that motion?
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion in second, we have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I recuse myself from the vote.
Okay. Recusing Mr. Sales, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so congratulations, Mr. Sales.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is to consider the change of the council meeting times to five thirty. I think we've talked about this before, that might be easier for those who would like to attend the council meeting to reschedule to five thirty. I know it's hard when folks are getting off work at five to get here at five, so, um, Daddy Daddy Shifley just said no. Nobody look at Mr. Doughty. So I'll take the motion, if that's the council's pleasure to change the meeting time to five thirty.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion for second.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor, oh, let me back up, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Starting, I guess with our workshop, we'll be meeting at five thirty. All right, and then we have been discussing proposed ordinance for festivals. Rob, do you want to cite that, or are you ready to discuss?
I will try, but I've not made much progress since last time we talked. I have, we, myself and the city attorney for Savannah have been playing phone tag. And basically, what I wanted to try to find out from Savannah is how it works, their festival areas, but unfortunately, we have not been able to touch base with each other. I'm, I was optimistic originally about maybe having this ready for the Rhythm and Ribs. I'm not sure that because of the timeframe we're dealing with now with the workshop, and then our regular meeting going to be after the festival, I'm not sure that that's going to be possible or not. But I'm still going to work on it diligently, try to give Savannah attorney and tweak what we have drafted, but I'm just not real comfortable yet with how, making sure we have all our i's dotted, t's crossed, about who would handle the money and things of that nature. But I'll do the best I can with, within the time we have to have it for Rhythm and Ribs, but realistically, that may not be able to come to fruition.
And if we don't make that deadline of Rhythm and Ribs, which is March the fifth, that first Saturday, that's okay. We'll, we'll conduct business as we have in the past with that festival.
And I, I'm confident that we can have this put together. But I think just because of our meeting in Mark falling after the festival date, we just don't have enough meeting days to, to really hash this out.
Right. And I believe the outreach marketing group is planning on hosting the summer music series like we did last year with the Rock Block, so, so that will be coming up May, June, and July. So that would be applicable maybe at that time.
One possibility is that we have a couple of weeks to the next workshop. And if we get a good draft and everybody likes it, we could have a, you know, quick little special call meeting to adopt it in an happening place. So I'll keep working on trying to get a good draft up to workshop, and then we can...
Does anyone have any questions about the ordinance specifically? This was the one that would involve the armbands for any, any event that there's, adult members being sold.
How did we do it last year at Rhythm and Ribs?
Um, at, at Rhythm and Ribs and at the Rock Block events, it was up to the restaurant that was serving alcohol to check anybody that came up, and, and they would have to be ID'd. And the way that this would work is you would, they would actually purchase an armband, and that would let that person that's serving know that they had been checked. And the police department would actually do the checking to make sure that the IDs were valid, you know, that kind of thing. And then the funds that were raised from the selling of the armband could be used to offset the cost of the security for the event. So it seemed to work well. This was actually a suggestion that Scott Murphy had, which I thought was a very good one, to one, make sure that we don't have any underage drinkers, to make sure that nothing gets out of control. We've been very fortunate, nothing has. But also to, to provide another income source for special events like this that requires a lot of security.
That was one of the things about the Savannah ordinance, it was, it does not relieve the vendor from checking the ID. Even though they have the armband, the ordinance still required them to check the ID. And that's one of the things I wanted to inquire about, is why are you requiring that on top of having the armband? So there's a few things that are, you know, need to be kind of ironed out, and then that's...
And we may ultimately decide this is not what we want to do, but it was certainly worth, worth looking at to see if it was something that would be beneficial to Tifftown since we're having this. All right, any other questions regarding festival ordinance?
So we need to table this motion, or table this line item?
It was just a discussion item, so...
Oh, discussion item, yeah, it is.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I see no further business for us to discuss this evening. Anyone else have anything to come to the council? Screen now, we're in the motion, please. There may be no further business. There's this meeting at the...